Now, we will open the S K S City Council meeting. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And thank you. Okay, city, can I have roll call, please?
Counselor Dunsmere.
Here.
Counselor Gates.
Here.
Counselor Hughes.
Here.
Counselor Linky.
Here.
Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Tenbush.
Here.
Mayor Drinkling.
Here. Thank you very much, Sadie. Do we have any citizens, community in the queue for speaking?
I don't see any hands raised. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak, can you use the raised hand function and I'll bring you in? No?
No. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, we are at the consent agenda. I'm sure you've all had a chance to look it over. You know what's on there. Council Rules Amendment, the Authorization of the Contract Except Grant, and the amount of 220 from the Oregon Department of Administrative Services to mitigate impacts from the 2020 wildfires is on there as well. And of course, the 24th, 2021 Council Minutes to approve. So can I? Got a motion? All right.
I moved to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a first and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for that. Okay, moving right along, we are at Department and Committee Reports. So any of you have anything from your groups that you'd like to speak on? Okay, I'll start off with you, Jerry.
So Arts Commission, Summer Celebration is moving forward. It's going to be, it's going to look different than it ever has, you know, because of restrictions and stuff and COVID and everything. But there are a lot of events planned that's moving forward. There's a coloring contest. I'm not sure if they've asked the city yet, but they, it's Dress the Lager that they put, they put together. And the idea was floated around that the winner of the contest would actually, their costume would end up on the lager. But I just, we, I don't think they, they believe that that's a real feasible option. So, but it's a, it's a really cute idea. The picture's really cool. It's going to be distributed out. I think Thriftway, some, a couple of the food carts, the library is going to distribute it. But you know, good ideas. They're moving forward with the labyrinth that they always do, painted down in the intersection next to Thriftway and between Thriftway and New Panda. Is that, I think that's it. So yeah, that intersection right there, the labyrinth will be painted like, like usual. There's going to be different events decorating, decorations in downtown, Chalk Walk where they, they're going to have professional artists do some chalk drawings downtown. And then they're going to, they're requesting that people in neighborhoods do their own chalk drawings, post them on social media with hashtag Esticated Chalk Walk. But there's some really good ideas floating around, so you know, watch for it. There's a, you know, Summer Celebration is happening. It's just not going to be what we're used to. So, but at least we're having an event this year. So that's all I got.
All right. Thank you, Jerry. Next, who do we got next to? Okay, Katie?
So I've got a couple of them. Chad, because I wasn't at the last meeting, which I apologize for, but there was a Chad meeting in May, and it was a really good meeting. I had a presentation from a representative from the Department on Land Conservation and Development and gave some really great pointers of how to encourage different types of housing, specifically middle housing. It was a really great presentation, which actually kind of goes against some of what we all thought might help combat the barriers of affordable housing. Last year, there was a conversation with the Holt Homes Development that if we cut the lot sizes in half, that we could essentially make housing more affordable for homeownership. And what we are seeing is that they're still getting $400,000 for those half-size lots, kind of backwards to what we were thinking was going to end up being the result of breaking those lot sizes up in half. But anyways, it was a lot of education during the last Chad meeting. That being said, the next Chad meeting is this week, and I believe that this is the last one. They might have one more after this one, but they're basically wrapping up Chad. So I wanted to point out to this group that I was a little bit disappointed in the attendance numbers. I think I brought it up once before that the, the group of nine that we appointed back at the beginning of the year, not all of them are showing up to every meeting. So I'm a little bit concerned that some of the recommendations might be weighted toward one group more than another, just based on the lack of participation or attendance. So I wanted to point that out. Second is that the C4 Committee has appointed me and one other representative from Tuolleton to serve on the Clackamas County Climate Action Plan Committee. They really wanted to have a representative from the rural area to really stand up and, and try to balance out this committee. Because this committee is made up of so many smart experts in the field of climate change and climate action, that they wanted to have some balance and really people who were sitting down to, to speak up for those that might not be well represented on that board. Specifically, in our case, the rural loggers, the, you know, the industry, the people who really live out in the forest or in the boonies. So I'm really excited for that opportunity. And then Estacada Connects did meet earlier this, this month. Unfortunately, my life has been a little hectic and I did not have an opportunity to attend. But I wanted to just share with everybody that that group is still meeting on a regular basis. And I think some amazing things are coming from them. So those are my updates.
Great. Thank you, Katie. Charity?
Thanks. So the school board meeting, school board met on Thursday last week before graduation. I unfortunately wasn't able to attend in person. I was doing, I'm a cheer coach, and so we were hosting tryouts at that time. However, thankful for recordings and Zoom and all that good stuff. Since it is the school board and the end of the year, I had like five pages of notes. So for the sake of time, I'm gonna just hit the high points. And so, yeah, here we go. So sadly, the school board opened up expressing their, their thoughts and their prayers to the families of, of the kiddos that lost their lives. I know my son was in school with, with one of the gals. And so it was a really sad situation. And, but they expressed their, their prayers to the families and the, and the community on that. With that said, some big highlights and successes included the Spanish-speaking family night. They had a really, really nice turnout, got to meet some new members in our Spanish-speaking community. Some questions were answered. And so for them, it was a success. Bacalaurate Night was a really good success. And then wanted to also mention the Spring Fling. As this was very impactful for the students. I just want to also say, you know, in regards to the split Spring Fling, that, you know, just kind of kudos to the staff members and the teachers that were able to make this happen. I believe it was mentioned that they were, I, they were going above and beyond to try and put this together, meeting outside under tarps and all sorts of crazy things, you know, with the restrictions. So they were able to do that. So that was really nice to hear. And great that it was an impactful event for the students as well. So each principal was, basically gave a presentation at the last meeting. And each principal offered, each principal offered highlights, challenges, and wins. And so I kind of just went through and I'm just gonna like hit the ones that they all mentioned. Because there was like a common thread throughout the year, being such a crazy year that it was. So highlights, all the principals said that they stated how impressed they were with their teachers for always being so flexible. The constant changes, sometimes weekly, caused a lot of districts, not ours, but a lot of districts did give up. Our school teacher, our school district and teachers and staff didn't give up. They were nimble and creative in their approach and they stayed the course. And I, I really do, you know, looking at other school districts and their hybrid model as well, well as their comprehensive distance learning model, I really do feel that we did have a superior product for our children. Challenges they faced, COVID and all of its obvious problems. So, so yeah, even though the district had a great comprehensive distance learning model, it was still, it was still challenging to constantly be switching gears. And then they were going to hybrid and then some in person. And then toward the end of the year, you had some kids in all three. So it was kind of, those presented some nice challenges for, for the teachers and the staff. But hey, they did it. So wins, test scores were up and proficiency was up from, from fall to spring. Parent engagement was better. They, and, and I know that they did this because I was a parent who received a phone call and also a bouquet. But they, the teachers and staff and principals of all these schools were making phone calls throughout the year. Throughout the year, they were sending letters. They were sending notes, you know, just words of encouragement. And that was really impactful, I think. Very, very nice. And I don't know, I liked it. It was, it was sweet to get notes in the mail from my kids from their teachers, just saying, you know, hang in there, you know, we're, we're gonna do it. We're gonna get through this year. You're doing a good job, things like that. So a big win, which is also something that I mentioned in the highlights, was the school district, all of the schools, their ability to successfully navigate from comprehensive distant learning to hybrid to in-person over a span of just a few months. And they did it successfully. The last school report I did, I had mentioned they were doing a COVID-19 audit. They went ahead and did that. They had an outside agency come in and do the audit because they wanted to make sure they were being above board with all their COVID-19 guidelines. And it was a very positive report. The school district met or exceeded guidelines in all areas. So, yeah, and I mean, as a parent of two kids who are in the school district, I can honestly say that I, you know, given what they were thrown this year, they did a really, really good job. And every time that I had an issue, you know, whether I was frustrated or, you know, my kids were depressed or, you know, through all of that, every time I reached out, you know, I always got a very, very quick response. So I know it was a very frustrating year for all of us. And, you know, our, our kids really did go through a tremendous amount of emotional stress. But I really do feel that our district did an amazing job. And I have every confidence that they are going to be leaders and innovators for next year and the years to come. So that's my report.
Thank you, Cherry. That was very informative. I appreciate that. Any other ones for any other groups that would like to speak on this? No? Okay, great. We will move on to the City Managers Report.
Hello. I just want to say I'm, it's really nice that we have these reports because it's nice to hear what all the other people are up to and keep, keep us updated. So that's great. I'm going to start out with, we have an opportunity for a Hazard Mitigation Grant to do seismic upgrades to City Hall. And I just wanted to ask the council to kind of get your thoughts because we will have to spend, you know, about, about $30,000 to get the $150,000 to do this. And I just wanted to kind of get a feel for what you guys think. Do you think that's worth it? We do have other city buildings that if the City Hall were to collapse or fall in, that, that we could go to. But I think it's important as a historic building too, that we try to make City Hall where it's going to be standing forever. And it, you know, it would be a loss to us if everything did go because we of course have a lot of costly equipment in there and stuff and all of our records. So I just kind of wanted to get a feeling on what you guys all thought, if we should proceed on this grant.
Okay. Joel, you had a question?
Yeah. What's, when was the last like earthquake retrofit to the building? Or has that one ever been done?
Never.
And so?
At least not in the 40 years I've been in Estacada.
Okay. So that building's been there for more than 40 years. How long has it actually been there, curiosity?
It got built in 1935.
Okay.
Paul, do you have a question?
Go ahead.
Yeah. Where would the, I love the idea, Denise. I think it'd be great. The 30,000, where would it come from?
Probably the general fund, I would think. I would hate to make that a, something from water and sewer funds where we're asking the fee, even though that's what City Hall is there for. But I think that we've been fortunate in our general fund money. So I think we would probably just take it out of there. And this wouldn't happen for another year and a half, probably. The grant process is quite lengthy. But they do have a lot more money right now from all the monies that has been going around for COVID and the wildfires. So I think it's a good opportunity for us to get the money. But if there is quite a large match, and that's what I was just, should we go ahead and continue? And just kind of wanted to get everyone's feelings about that.
I have one question on it too. Would this retrofit, would it aesthetically change the building at all?
No. It's, the fire department just went through it two years ago. And, you know, you can't really tell that anything was done to the building. So I don't know how they do it, but it doesn't, it doesn't change the look of it.
All right. Joel, you had one more question?
So just so I'm understanding, we put out 30,000 because that's the minimum they require? Or is that what it would take to complete the total cost of retrofit?
I think that's their match, that, that's, it's like, it's a 25% or I can't remember what, but it's larger than most other ones. And we figured, we really don't know how much it's going to be because that's the first part of the grant is to do the study. But what we're hearing is it would probably be about 30,000 to 35,000 of city money.
Okay. I think that's an important thing to know because if it's going to cost $250,000 to properly do the upgrade, there'll be additional money we have to plan on. So.
Katie?
So you're just asking to go out for the grant? This isn't a guarantee or of anything. This is asking permission to explore it, go into the process of even applying for the grant. And then if we were to be awarded the grant in the future, then all of the, the options of how we spend money and what we spend money on will then be given to us at that point, correct?
Right. Right. So the study, I think, is around $10,000, maybe less. And so if we didn't get the grant, we would be out that money. But if that came back saying it was going to be some like huge number to do it, we could at that time just say, well, we are, we're just not going to apply. And we'll, you know, put it for a later date when maybe they do want to. But yes.
I was going to say, and then at that point, we spent $10,000 to find out what's wrong with City Hall. And then maybe at least know what to expect in the future when the earthquake comes. And we'll just, you know, say our goodbyes to you then. I, I see no problem with moving forward with this process if it's not a guaranteed grant and we just want the, we want to explore it now. I love that idea, especially for such a huge return like you were talking about.
Yeah.
And I'm pretty sure that's a consensus around the board. Am I right, everyone? Shake your head. Okay. Everybody's good.
Okay. Thank you very much. We also, Wade Creek Park is going to get moving along here pretty soon. We're, we're waiting for one more permit, but they're going to be starting to bring their equipment in. And I was wondering if the council wanted to have a groundbreaking for this phase.
Most definitely. Most definitely.
Okay. We would probably do it within the next couple of weeks. So we'll get something planned and we'll get the photo ops and we'll get out there and, and do a groundbreaking. I think that would be good for, there's been a lot of questions. So.
I'd be curious, is there any way that, I know they did this at the school district when they redid the auditorium, that the counselors could be part of a, maybe a plaque put in the ground or something at this stage when we complete the Wade Creek?
We're going to have a plaque.
Right.
Kind of like in the library that acknowledged all the boards.
Exactly.
That, that will happen.
Well, that'll be exciting. Exciting. But you guys will be in history here. I think that'd be great. I think that'd be great. So thank you.
The Emergency Operation Plan, Melanie has the three bids that we've been trying to get to redo this plan. We haven't chosen one yet, but there is one way that, that is that we have our eyes on. And so that work should start this summer. So you probably will start having workshops in the, I don't know when in July, depending on our meetings, how full they are. But we might have workshops on different nights. We are planning in July to go to in-person meetings. But if some of you, we should have equipment that if a Zoom meeting will work, we want to go in person for our regular meetings. But if a Zoom would be easier maybe for these type of smaller committee, you know, meetings with these, we could look into that too. So we'll have that discussion when we get a schedule, a schedule going. But it's coming. So that's a good thing.
Good, good.
The Marijuana Town Hall, now that we, oh, Jerry? Did you have something?
Yeah. Regarding the meetings, is there still going to be a hybrid option for some of the people that maybe want, not for council, but for attendees that might not be able to make the meeting? Is there still going to be a hybrid option for attendees?
We'll have to see once we get it up. We definitely will be streaming live on YouTube. But we'll have to see how that all is going to work with this new equipment. And we'll know more. I think they're going to start showing it to us next week. So we'll know more on that. The Marijuana Town Hall, we want to do it the week of July 19th, 20th or 21st is what we're kind of going at. We hope that that can be a mixed one where it's in-person and Zoom. We're going to be doing tickets because we still aren't at full capacity, even though we're in the low. So we're going to do, like we had said before, we're going to do three different half-hour to 40, 45-minute meetings in one night where there's going to be 20 tickets for each. And if more than 60 people wanted tickets, then we'll maybe do it another night to, to see. So we're going to just see how many people buy the tickets. They don't have to buy them. I'm not going to say that. They're free. They're just going to get the tickets. So.
Okay.
And we'll do the same, we're going to be using the same format that the school did when they had a ticket, a ticket thing for the auditorium. Yeah. Joel?
Joel?
Just a quick question about that. Since we're now low risk for the, for the county, which is really exciting. Can people come down to City Hall to get help with signing up with that? Those tickets you're talking about, or can they call in to get help with it?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Can we make an announcement on the cities, on the city social media and stuff about that?
Yeah. So just, just, I know the dates I told it out there, but just let me, let me know what night is best. We don't need all the counselors there because we're presenting information. But you could all certainly be there. You just can't discuss it when you're, when you're there because it's not a regular meeting. It's a down all. And so if, maybe shoot me an email, which night is better, a Monday, Tuesday, or a Wednesday for you? It's a, like I said, the week we're looking at is July 19th, 20th, and 21st. So shoot me an email, what works best for you guys? We're, we're starting a Wade Creek Park Phase Three fundraising drive. We have a couple of grants that we're trying to get, one being the Ford Foundation. They really look at community support. And even though we've raised about, let me see, $893,000 in community support, one was a large grant from the Estacada Foundation, 75,000 and the 15,000 from the library. They like to see numbers, even if it's $5, even if it's 200 people giving $5. That's what they'd rather see. So we are starting a campaign tomorrow. We're going to be getting letters out. This weekend, the ant farm at the Harvest Market Square is having a community celebration. I don't know what to call it. And they're going to let us have a table there with flyers and our dip jar. And we're going to start trying to get some donations of people that show up there. That's 11 to 3. We have the Fourth of July Parade coming up. And we're gonna, the golf cart that we purchased a few years ago to be in the Rose Festival, we're gonna clean that up and put some balloons and some pictures on it. And Parks and Rec is going to drive that thing through the parade and have a little thing where people can throw in money if they want. And we'll hand out flyers. That same day on the Fourth of July at Harvest Market Square, we're going to have a concert from four to six. And we will have flyers and the Parks and Rec people will be there, trying to get some donations. And so we're going to be sending letters out to organizations, the Floraroom users, library patrons, individuals that we have identified, all the boards and committees in town. So I hope the seven of you will give us 20 bucks or so and try to donate for this park. And that would be great. And so we have till August 1st. Our, we have to get the thing turned in August 1st. So it's going to be a month and a half of just trying to get these donations in. And, and we think the community will, will back this. They really want that. And we're going to work on that. So. And then let me see, Fourth of July Parade. And then the last thing is the Hazard Medic, oh, no, no, no. The Wastewater Treatment Plant Facility Plan. I wanted to bring that up because a couple of people had questions. I think Joel Kurt called you and talked to you. And I just, I was, in fact, that's who I was talking to when the budget, when the urban renewal meeting started. So I know there was questions about the amount of building permits that we've had because he did this in May, so he only had the first three months. The population estimates, because we get those from Portland State. And even though we jumped up in March to the 4,200 number, they haven't changed their outlook on theirs yet because they do that in July. So he wanted me to, to make sure that everyone knows that once we get this plan back from DEQ, that then we do a design and we do a redesign report. And that will be, so let's say DEQ takes three months. That's going to be in September. And by then, we'll have a better outlook of seeing, has the building kept going like it was? Because of lumber prices, are we going to have some type of slowdown? We'll know what subdivisions have been approved since the last time he looked at this. So that redesign report is where you can change all those numbers and all those building permit numbers and forecasts. And he said, we just need to be sure, and he's been here a long time, that we plan for a plant big enough to support the, the people in the next 20 to 30 years. And so those numbers are very easy to change. The council will be involved in that redesign report. And the numbers will be a little bit clearer for everyone then. So when you get this report back from DEQ, the statistics can change. And DEQ expects those statistics to change. And it's really in that redesign report that then goes back to DEQ, but it's a bigger turnaround after we do that. So the council is involved in that piece of it. And then we sent it back to DEQ and said, these are the changes we've made. Because the council is also going to be involved in the decision, where is the plant going to go? He has outlined a couple of places that we feel like it could go. One being a lot cheaper than another, less, less problems, you know, to deal with the county, to expand our UGB, that type of thing. But it's definitely a council decision. But it's a decision to do after DEQ has said, okay, we approve this. Go ahead and start looking at it. So that said, I still will take questions. I don't know if I can answer them, but I can get back to you. I can talk to Kurt tomorrow and I'll take any questions.
Hey, Joel?
First one on the list of questions I had was the DEQ report. If these numbers we know are off now, what's, what are we sending to DEQ? What are they doing? And what's, I mean, if we're sending them stuff with off numbers, how much is that really going to affect us? Because?
Where's, we're sending them this report, but they know that things change over the three to four months that, you know, so this report was written in May. It's already changed and it's June, and every month those numbers change and they realize that. So this is just the basis for we letting them know we need to, we need to do something. We expect our plant to hit capacity. If we don't do anything, we need to do it. You know, the thing about us is um, even if these numbers are off and like the five-year forecast is low, we're hitting the ground right now. We have no intention of sitting on this once we get this report done. Um, I'm not gonna be here, but I, the city is going forward this, I want this plant built in two years. You know, I don't want to wait till three years. We know we can, you know, supply the demand right now for two more years. We, we, we don't have a question about that, but um, we need to get it up and going on this. And so some cities get this report done, and then five years down the road, they said, okay, now we're gonna build it. We aren't doing that. We're getting this report done and we're gonna build it. So our numbers, you know, could be off. None of us can really say if they're right or wrong. But we're doing the best we can to get accurate numbers in there. And like I said, in September, we'll be able to know a lot better.
I think a big question, I also, will, uh, will it affect us if our numbers are off? Is there grant, uh, on, or were they specific requirements on us? Nothing like that?
Nope, nope, nope.
That, that was my biggest concern right there is, will these numbers affect us down the road for things we want to do? If it doesn't, then no.
No.
Especially if we're gonna be remaking the report, so.
Yeah, that you'll, you'll go through the redesign process, yeah. I'm excited about it. I, I'd like to have a new plant within a couple of years. It's probably gonna take three, but I'm always optimistic.
Now, that was one of the biggest things on my, on my list of stuff to accomplish from here, is to get that moving forward, so I'm right there with you.
Hey Joel, before you're off, we're gonna get that done.
Yes. It's, it's literally on the top of my list, so I'm right there. I just want to make sure that whatever we do isn't gonna hurt us down the road, that's all.
No, no.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate you getting him to call me, so.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So.
Anyway, so I just wanted to be sure that we could go ahead, because we'd like to get that re- report sent to DEQ, if that's okay with everybody. And if you have any questions, keep sending them to me and I'll have Kurt answer you. And charity, I did send them your questions, but he hasn't had time to answer me yet.
That's okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're going forward with that, good. And that's all I had.
All right, well, that's good. That was a lot of good stuff. All right, we are now at the uh, public hearing for state shared revenues. I will now open the public hearing to discuss proposed uses of state, state revenue sharing funds from the city of Estacada. I will now ask Denise Carey to speak on this.
Yeah, this is the, the paperwork that we need to file with the state every year to be able to receive the state shared revenues, which is your marijuana tax, your gas, gas tax, your cigarette tax, and your straight, street tax. I think that's it. So we just, this is just kind of a paperwork showing you had a hearing, and it says my internet connection is unstable, so I hope you guys are all hearing me with this. And so if it, I think, um, when we close the public hearing, um, if it's easier, go ahead and just adopt resolution twenty-one-seven now, so we don't have to come back to it. It's down below, but you can just vote to approve that and then do it now.
Okay, all right.
If there's any questions, though.
Okay, are there any questions, Denise Carey?
No, just do it now.
Yeah, do it now. When you see it again, just like the mayor did at the, so just do it now.
I will ask for a motion.
I move to approve resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-seven, a resolution relating to municipal services, state shared revenues.
Okay.
Okay.
I got a first and a second. All those in favor?
From Joel, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah.
A second. Yeah, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. That makes it a lot easier.
Yeah.
All right, so now I gotta read this again and go into the next one, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yes, the city budget.
I will now open the public hearing again to discuss the proposed uses of state share revenues. Uh, I will ask uh, Budget Officer Carey to speak on this, so go ahead.
Yeah, so this is the, the, for the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, and I'm not gonna go through my whole budget message again. This has not changed one penny from the um, Budget Committee meeting. Um, and from the approval at the Budget Committee, um, the staff didn't have any changes like sometimes we have, so unless there's questions to go over anything that uh, maybe we missed at the Budget Committee meeting, I'm, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on it.
Okay. Are there any questions for, for Carey? No? Okay, I will now close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
No, no motion on this one.
No motion on this one, just a?
Well, you can go ahead and do the resolution.
No, the re- the resolution will be at the next meeting.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Okay, all right, all right. So we're good there?
Yep.
All right, now I will open it one more time. I'll open the uh, public hearing script, and I will ask Budget Officer Carey to speak on this one.
So this? You want me to speak, Denise?
If you want to, yeah.
Okay. Um, so, sorry, I, I wrote this one, so I'll answer the questions. Um, this is a supplemental budget for the current fiscal year that we're in. So it's changing um, the revenues and expenses in our current fiscal year, because we received some unexpected revenues throughout the year in four of our funds. They were in the um, general fund, library fund, sewer SDC fund, and our LID bonding fund. Um, in the general and library funds, we received the COVID nineteen cares grant money. And since we spent that money on COVID nineteen-related purchases, we had to do a supplemental budget to receive that money and spend it. Um, also in the general fund, we um, didn't anticipate our building permit growth again this year. This is usually something you guys see over and over again. And so we brought in about five hundred thousand dollars more than we expected in building permits, so we then in turn had to pay our contractor out um, of seventy-five percent of those revenues. Um, in the library fund, it was the COVID nineteen purchases, but it was about eleven thousand dollars in the library fund. Um, in the sewer SDC fund, we had a larger beginning fund balance than we anticipated, because we had expected the invoices for the North Estacada Sewer Line to come in in the previous fiscal year and be paid out. So, but they did, they weren't, they weren't turned in on time, and so that made our beginning fund balance going into the new year higher than anticipated, but then we paid out those invoices this year. So it evened out. Um, and then in our LID bonding fund, we just received a few extra payments, which we normally do from property owners paying down their loans, and so we in turn paid, paid down our loan to the bank.
Yeah.
And that was about fifty-eight thousand dollars, I believe. Yeah.
Good. All right, any questions for staff on this? No? Okay, we thank you, Sadie, and uh, now we will leave the public hearing and go back into the city council, and we need a motion on this, I'm figuring, right?
Yeah.
I move to approve resolution two-zero-two-one dash zero-one-zero. A resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty dash twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, great. I have a first, do I have a second?
A second.
It falls a second?
Oh.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Supplemental budget is done. Okay, we are now at council business. First on the list, I have a resolution twenty-twenty-one zero-one-three, a resolution for the Estacada City Council approving and change of rates for solid waste recycling and other materials as allowed by the ordinances twenty-eighteen zero-zero-four and twenty-eighteen zero-zero-five.
Yeah, so um, as you know, three years ago, we redid our contract with our franchise for garbage. And um, uh, Arrow and Walkers are our people that do our garbage pickup here in town. And um, we were gonna wait, we didn't ask for increase the first year. We, we decided on a rate the first year that would, would bring it closer to what the county is charging for distant rural. And we said, because we'll raise it the next, not the very next year, but the next year. Well, then COVID hit, and we just really didn't want to raise it during the last year with COVID. So this year, though, we really need to catch up with um, you know, garbage. You can see that the fees that they have to pay, the garbage uh, dump fees have gone up a lot this year, and, and uh, uh, what else was it? Um, two other fees have gone up tremendously, plus uh, and, and you'll remember that when we redid the franchise, they provide the carts now, uh, recycling or the bigger carts. They don't do the um, uh, yard debris yet, but we are doing that pilot program before we have to make everyone get one more can. Really, it's the having three cans. Uh, a lot of it is, you know, people having three cans, and what do they do with them? And so we're seeing how this pilot project works so far. We've emptied the thing, I think, two times. And I think people are trying to follow the rules, so there might be a little bit of garbage being dumped in there, but it, it seems like it's working, and it seems like that people are respecting what it's there for. So we'll see, we ju- they're gonna be out tomorrow to dump again, to, to dump it again, so we'll see how this one goes. And so this pilot project, um, if it works, we'll probably continue this, this way, instead of having everyone have three cans. Um, we'll see, we like, we're gonna do a survey after we're done to try to get responses from people on, did they use it? Did they know about it? You know, how can we better get it advertised if they didn't? And uh, and see what people say, and then we'll bring it, you know, it'll start again up in September. It'll be September and October. We'll have it down there again, so um, I think everything's working great. We do have Josh and Rhonda, oh, and Judy um, on here, if you guys have any questions of them, since they are the experts in this. But really, what all this is doing is giving um, increasing those rates so they can cover their costs and and go forward and get closer to what other people are paying around us in garbage fees. And the people around us don't have um, yard debris, they just have recycling and uh, garbage service.
Okay.
So if you have any questions, they're here. If not, we can pass the resolution.
Okay. I don't really have a question. I would just like to say it is great to see you, Josh, and it's wonderful to see you, Judy and Rhonda. We appreciate you. And Judy, you're looking better than ever. We really love having you. Thank you. Um, other than that, that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions for them before we move on? No, so uh, can I get a motion? Motion on the floor?
It's for resolution.
Yeah. Yep.
Uh, I move to approve resolution two-zero-two-one dash zero-one-three. Resolution of the Estacada City Council approving a change in rates for solid waste recycling and other materials as allowed by ordinances two-zero-one-eight dash zero-zero-four and two-zero-one-eight dash zero-zero-five.
Hey, great. Can I get a second to that?
Back in.
Okay, I've got charity as a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, motion passes, and again, we thank both of you for the great service that you give us.
Thank you guys. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. All right, move.
And he's gone.
And I, I think, I think that was my fault. It's, which is, when I'm moving people, names change and then I get the wrong one.
Okay, take over, Paul. Sadie got rid of it.
Now's my opportunity.
Oh, that's funny.
You have to be so quick. Okay.
Maybe it's good he was muted.
Yeah. Yeah.
He had some very crosswords there.
Yeah.
She cut me off. Okay.
Todd, we're, we're, we're at D.
Yeah, okay, so we have resolution twenty-twenty-one zero-zero-seven, a resolution relating to municipal services, state shared revenues.
Shaw, we already did that one. We're on, we're on D.
Yeah.
Have we already?
Yeah.
Yep.
During the, during the public hearings, we did those ones, the.
Okay, resolution twenty-twenty-one zero-twelve, a resolution for the purpose of transferring appropriations per ORS two-nine-four-four-six-three. Okay. Wanna talk about that one?
And Sadie, Sadie will.
Yeah, it, this is just a quick transfer resolution, um, moving five hundred thousand dollars from our park SDC fund to our park capital construction fund to pay for engineering services um, for Wade Creek Park Phase Three, and the reason the transfer was needed was because we applied for I think it was about four grants, and we anticipated receiving those and having that money to pay the engineering services, but we did not get those grants, so.
Okay.
After Carter this year to get new grants.
But, but this money is part of what, the, the transfers will go down in your new budget. We won't be transferring quite as much because we're doing it now, so it's the same amount of money.
Great. Thank you. So you've heard this, so I have a motion?
Uh, I move to approve resolution twenty-twenty-one dash zero-one-two, a resolution for the purpose of transferring appropriations per ORS Second.
Got a first and second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Okay, now we're at the charter review committee appointments. I've had a chance to read them all over. And uh, we had a lot of great applicants. I want to thank everybody for coming out and applying for that. It's a pretty important group, but I've chosen five. I'm gonna start off with the first one, Brent Dodro, Rob Gaskell.
Josh. Um, it, um, in the packet, it asks if we want to uh, uh, if the council wants to decide to change the amount of members to seven and appoint all applicants. Um, I don't know how the rest of council feels and how you feel, but I think they were all great applicants, and I think they're um, having all of their eyeballs on the charter would be uh, an amazing opportunity and an amazing opportunity for all seven to get involved in the community. So um, I move that we up the members to seven and appoint all the applicants.
Well, I think uh, first I have to decide who they are, and then you'll decide whether that's appropriate or not. So I will name off the five I've chosen, and then you can go from there. Uh, I've decided Brent Dodro, Rob Gaskell, Teresa Davis, Heidi Prokop, and Valerie Hansen are my five choices. Now, if the council doesn't believe that that's appropriate, then they can obviously uh, decide differently. So how do you feel about the choices?
I'd like to put forward my previous motion.
And I'd like to second that motion.
So we have two. Um, all those in favor of the seven? Um, so, everybody? Okay. It's done, seven is in.
So Joel, what, Joel and Sean, you were noses on that vote?
I, I was a no, and Joel was a no. That's the only two. I think, charity, charity, where are you? You were seven or five?
You muted.
Sorry, I was muted. Um, yeah, I, I voted for the seven.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. Okay, now that's done, and we're moving right along. We are at the parks in subdivisions discussion.
Yeah, yeah. I'm having a hard time finding a city that requires um, the parks in, I thought that um, Happy Valley did, because they have them in all of theirs, but Chris said no, they do kind of do the same thing we do. They talk to the developer when they come in and encourage it, and that they don't, they don't, if they do want it, then they have standards for it, but they don't. And I'm just having a hard time finding that, so I'm gonna have to keep looking and try to get back to you guys on finding a city that requires those neighborhood parks.
Hey Denise?
Did you get a chance to check uh, Ben? I thought I, I'd seen something in there that said it.
I, I, I have a call in, but I haven't heard back from them, so I'll pressure them a little bit more.
Okay.
For, for, because I kind of want to talk to them about it, so.
Gotcha.
But I will, excuse me, look at Ben. Yeah. Um, so I really don't have much to report, so I will get it, the. And so I really don't have much to report. So I will get it. The, the thing is staff does know how much you guys want these. So we are talking to all, we really haven't had a, someone tell us no, you know, of the developments, because I think they know that it, it also makes their, their subdivision more, a more livable place if there are the small parks. So we haven't really had someone come right out and said, well, we just aren't gonna do it, but they could and we couldn't do anything about it. So I will keep pressing to try to find some examples of cities that do that and come back to you guys with an ordinance that would require that if I can. And I will check with Ben again, Joel.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions regarding that before I move on?
Yeah, I, I do have a question. So if, if we're, if we're gonna do these, um, have a requirement that subdivisions have parks, these would not be city maintained parks. These would be H O A maintained parks. Is that right?
So, well, that's, that's what we would prefer. If, if it's a, if it's a big city park, of course, we would, we would take it. Um, but we ran into an issue with uh, Dugan Estates, for example. They are gonna have an H O A. So even though they said, we'll build a park for you, we're gonna have to take it. You know, uh, because if we want to have one there, they aren't gonna have anyone to upkeep it once their subdivision gets done. So, but we don't mind doing that as long as it's a park that we have control over while they're building it too. So um, that's what you're gonna see with Dugan Estates when they come in.
So we have a, we have a park master plan, is that right? Something, so it, it seems to me that, that as a city, we know where the growth is gonna happen. And would it make more sense to identify the areas of growth and say, this is an area we want to park in and then have a bigger park as opposed to a smaller H O A maintained park? Um, and then when, when that subdivision goes in, they know already that there's gonna be a, you know, a ten acre park or something like that there in that area, something that would be more substantial that the city would maintain.
Yep. And so um, I'll, so Taylor, our planner, we ha- we actually have a calculation on how many parks you need and how many acres of parks. And Taylor is aware of that every time we do one. So if we need another bigger park that comes, we will be pushing for that with, with one of the, the subdivision that's gonna kind of take that over the top for us.
Okay.
All right, Katie?
Um, I have so many mixed feelings about requiring a park of a subdivision. I love the intention behind it because I think that ultimately parks add to livability. Um, add to family culture especially. Um, there's a lot of benefits that come from having parks. Um, there's also some disadvantages, um, particularly of homes that are situated around the parks. Um, where there's, there, there's less privacy, um, there's more noise issues, maybe some parking issues. Uh, some, you know, there's, there's, there's pros and cons to everything. That being said, there's, there's also a benefit, I believe, in, in my opinion, this is a personal opinion, not based on any research or any talking to constituents, but I believe that there is a, a, a benefit to having certain neighborhoods with a, a different culture that maybe is not necessarily family oriented. Um, sometimes when you, when you mix different groups of people, uh, you end up with more conflict. And sometimes that conflict comes around people who want to be around kids and some people who really want to not be around kids. Um, as an apartment manager, I can tell you that that conflicts arises the closer you are to a park. Um, that being said, if it's not normal or customary for a city in general to to require this or ask this of a private entity such as a subdivision developer. Um, I don't really know if that is a, a precedent that I want to see Estacada set. Um, in my opinion, you know, when we talk about freedoms, for example, sometimes freedom is, it can come back to, I own a piece of land that I would like to do something with. And if I want to subdivision it and sell it and make money off of it, I should be able to do it and fit within a certain parameter set by the city, of course, which we already have set for other people. But the more red tape we put up for people, the more essentially freedoms we are taking away from, from them. I, I guess I just, I see so many different sides of this that I don't really know if I am comfortable with moving forward and setting a precedent that our city can impose a uh, requirement like that on a private subdivision developer. And that's, I guess, the, the two cents that I wanted to contribute to this conversation because um, I, I didn't have an opportunity to discuss it with you guys at the last meeting, um, but I don't know why we want to move forward with this if it's not really been done before.
Yeah, we actually tabled the discussion at the last meeting because
Oh, okay.
because you and Justin weren't there. So, yeah.
Why, why don't I try to at least do a survey with our, our Clackamas County cities and maybe some cities our size? And let me, let me figure out how they're, how they're dealing with this. So we can just see, uh, because just because I haven't found anyone, doesn't mean they aren't out there. So let me take a look at that. And I'll try to reach out to cities.
And especially if we as a city are already taking a look at the development that's happening and where the growth is going and we're already projecting, okay, well, eventually we're gonna need to put like a bigger city park out there, you know? Right now, we're doing Wade Creek Phase Three, I know, but eventually we're gonna have to go out closer to, you know, River Mill Road or beyond it even, or, you know, closer up to Cemetery. I mean, we're going to have to look at different things to do. Um,
Yeah.
And it sounds like we're already doing that. So if we as a city are taking that approach, why would we ask the, the developers to take the approach on their end too?
I, I, I think the council will really like what Dugan Estates is doing, even though we're gonna have to own it, but I think, I think you guys will really like what their, the proposal is there, so.
Is, uh, Denise, is that the one, is that the one with the creek running through the property?
Uh huh.
Yeah, I, um, I saw what they, or what they uh, put forward to the Parks and Recs uh,
Yeah.
Committee and uh, it, it really, it really does look awesome. It's a, a great idea. It's just gonna, you know, it's gonna take some upkeep and maintenance, you know, especially around water.
Yep.
Yep.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, Katie, for those comments, though.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I kind of agree a little bit with what Katie's saying as far as about the freedoms and things, but I still think it's, you know, something that we can require and as she was talking a little bit about, uh, she's associating kids only with parks. There's different kind of parks. Natural spaces can be considered parks, walking past, things like that. There's adult parks as well. So they kind of fit into your, the, the adult kind of, you know, they don't like kids, you could put a different style park, but it encouraged, it, it does encourage, uh, you know, a addition, additional livability, outdoor living type of a, and, and promotes health in the city as well. So it is that a kind of like a, a present, but more of like a, uh, I don't know the right word, a theme or something. I don't, I know, I'm missing the word to fit there, but it kind of, it kind of helps us to promote that as a city and, and stuff, so. Which is kind of a big thing.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. We thank you for that, Denise, and that explanation. That was great.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. We are at Citizen and Community Group Comments. Do I have any in the uh?
Um, I don't see, oh, yes, I do. Kurt.
All right, go ahead and put her out.
And if we can just be sure they state their name and address, so for the record, yeah.
Yeah, and they'll have three minutes.
Hey Kurt, how are you, sir?
Good. How are you today, Sean?
Good. You want to put your uh, address and your name, Will?
You bet. My name is Kurt Schwager and I live in Estacada proper inside the city limits.
Nice.
I, I do have just a, a quick question about the parks. I know I'm not gonna get any answer, just kind of something that some people may or may not be thinking about, but um, let's say, I live on, kind of behind the element or the middle school. And let's say there's a new subdivision, for example, and I don't know uh, if Deuce Road, the subdivision that's going in there is inside city limits or whatever, but if there's a park that goes into that section that becomes city maintained, is that something that property taxes for that subdivision are going to pay? Or is that something that property taxes for all city Estacada residents are going to uh, have to input? And also I noticed uh, the creek that was mentioned in the other subdivision uh, with water, are there gonna be any kind of barricades around or, or something just as a safety issue uh, for like, you know, little kids? I mean, unfortunately, little kids and water don't mix really well i- in certain areas. So it was just kind of a couple of questions that I had. And again, I know I'm not gonna get, probably not gonna get any answers uh, today, and I understand that, but just something I was thinking about.
I can answer.
Appreciate those questions.
I, I can answer part two of that, if that's okay.
Jerry, raise your hand next time. I appreciate it.
Sorry, Sean. Want me to answer?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so um, there haven't been any, there haven't been any um, plans for that, uh, that park area yet, Kurt. Um, once the division starts to, once that subdivision starts to get built and everything, um, the parks, uh, there will be a plan in place and I'm sure that, you know, the, the planner will take every, every safety option and uh, you know, e- everything into consideration when they're planning that park. Um, they're not just gonna, uh, you know, just leave it open for, you know, little kids to, you know, fall in, but um, there haven't been any plans as of yet for that park, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, Denise, did you want to say something? You're muted.
Oh, I had it backwards. Um, for the taxpayer part, um, we, our taxes that we get in the city pretty much goes completely to police services. So we don't spend any taxes on, um, paying our parks maintenance workers. Um, that mostly comes from state shared revenues and fees and that type of thing. So the taxes that we collect from city residents are mostly police and especially because we're gonna be talking about upping our police. So uh, the, the, it's mostly fees that users pay that pay for that, those things.
Good. I'll, I'll be happy to pay for more police.
Yeah. If it's a city park, everyone can use it too from the city. It's, it's not just for that neighborhood, so, yeah.
Thank you. So did I answer all your questions there, Kurt?
Absolutely, sir. Thank you. And yes, as a former cop, I would be happy to pay more taxes for cops.
We appreciate you. We appreciate you. Thank you very much for coming in tonight. Do we have anybody else in holding?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, great. We are now at the mayor and council reports comment section. So Jerry, we'll start off with you.
Uh, as always, thanks staff. You did an amazing job and uh, thank you all for coming and short and sweet this week. Have a good, uh, have a good night.
Thank you. Katie?
Uh, thanks as always to city staff and uh, fellow counselors and Mr. Mayor. I do want to bring up really quick one, one thing tonight. Um, we are getting very close to the recall efforts of Mark Scholl, Commissioner Mark Scholl and uh, Chair Tudy Smith. Um, I have personally endorsed both of the uh, the recall efforts. And I am asking that if any of the counselors who are sitting on this board with me also endorse the recall efforts against Commissioner Mark Scholl or Commissioner Tudy Smith, please get in contact with me. Um, and I can get you in contact with the right person to officially sign an endorsement letter for um, both of those uh, people who are doing a gross mis injustice to Clackamas County. Um, that's all I'll say about that. Um, and uh, thank you as always.
Okay. Joel?
A couple of things on here. Uh, one, I, I didn't know if anyone saw the uh, the Oregon Audit Division. Uh, I'll put a uh, an audit of the city, uh, I mean, so the state, uh, the state budget. They were uh, quite badly reported in here. Uh, they, uh, six point four billion dollars was, was uh, had in errors on the state budget. And uh, that seriously concerns me as a, as elected official that are higher elected officials can't manage their own money um, to that, to that level. And I know that there was a lot of issues with COVID and everything else coming through, but if you read through the report, um, like I did, there's, some of the stuff goes back five, six, seven years. Um, so uh, what I'm considering proposing um, to the council for next uh, next um, next council meeting, I'm gonna see if I can have a letter drafted um, with expressing uh, our concern as elected officials in the way that they're handling our state budget. Um, and so that we basically can speak something out regarding that because it, it seriously concerns me. I mean, that's, that's a lot of money um, for the state to be having errors on and mishandling and stuff. So, and you guys can see the report yourself. It's, it's all over. You just look up the, the recent the budget and stuff that's coming out there, should say, uh, the Oregon Audit Division. Um, so uh, as far as the, the recall efforts and things that Charity mentioned, uh, adamantly uh, uh, oppose the recalls. I think uh, that despite the issues that they may have had in the past, and I don't know what Mark's uh, Scholl's current stuff is, so I'm not gonna speak to that. But as far as his positions on um, uh, on making decisions that I think uh, are on an elected official level, I haven't seen any issues yet on that one, especially more, most with uh, with Tudy Smith. Um, so uh, I stand behind her. Um, I don't know as much about Mark Scholl, so I can't say much there where I could, what I could stand behind anything either way, to be honest. But Tudy Smith, um, I've seen her actions. I wholly stand behind her. Um, and she's got my support. So, um, other than that, I don't really got much more to say.
Yeah, thank you, Joel. Charity?
Thanks. Uh, that, that was Katie, Joel.
I am so sorry, uh, Charity, I meant Katie.
Okay, it's all good. Um, nothing to report. Uh, at the end of this on my end, um, just want to thank again, um, everyone for coming out tonight and city staff. Um, I personally am excited for summer. Um, and I am um, hopeful and excited for us all to gather in person and um, yeah, I look forward to that.
Great. Thank you, Charity. Paul?
Um, yeah, I was just thinking about that too, that we only have one more virtual meeting, I believe, till we're live and I'm looking forward to that. But definitely thank everyone this evening for the uh, an efficient meeting and a productive one as well too. Thanks for the great discussion.
Thank you, Paul. Justin?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody. Appreciate everybody's time. Uh, I'm gonna give a quick shout out to my daughter. It's her birthday today, so happy birthday to her. Yeah, she's three, so whoop, whoop. Um, other than that, uh, thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate that. And again, thank you, staff. I appreciate you and uh, I appreciate everybody that was here tonight and called in, so thank you very much. And we will see you next time. So this meeting is adjourned.